Thank you. The next item we are pleased to bring forward is an update on our Opportunity Schools Initiative. And as you know, when we began this program, we promised the board a full analysis and review in three years. We are not at the three-year mark yet, but the work has been going along quite well. We wanted to provide you an interim update in advance of that more comprehensive three-year review and particularly want to note that this is important, given the board's continued investment, as we see in the proposed budget, to this initiative and the addition of two additional schools. So wanted to highlight that. Dr. Grant and Dr. Champ are here to provide that overview. Dr. Grant?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Shay, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Ingrid Grant, Chief of School Leadership for Henrico County Public Schools, and I'm joined today by Dr. Dea Champ, Director of Middle School Education. As you know, Henrico County remains committed to exploring innovative solutions to the ongoing teacher shortage. While all schools feel the impact, some, particularly those in the Fairfield and the Verona Magistero districts, experience higher vacancy rates, placing additional workload on teachers. To bridge this gap and strengthen support for staff and schools, ACPS launched the Opportunity Schools designation in August 2023, a long-term strategy aligned with the career ladder and the strategic goal to recruit, retain, and reward educators. Developed through data analysis, school leader engagement, teacher feedback, Opportunity Schools provide targeted support to schools who persistently have higher vacancy challenges. In the second year, we are pleased to share more about the Opportunity Schools and highlight the ongoing efforts to support staff and students. As a reminder, nine schools were designated as Opportunity Schools in 2023-2024 school year based on specific vacancy data points. For the 2024-2025 school year, Highland Springs Elementary was added to the Opportunity Schools designation, bringing the total to 10 schools. Once identified, schools hold this designation for three years, regardless of any changes in their vacancy rates or the number of provisionally licensed teachers. This stability ensures consistent support, resources to strengthen recruitment, retention, and instructional quality. To help stabilize staffing, enhance instruction, and foster long-term success, Opportunity Schools receive the following: a $3,300 annual incentive, a Teacher Fellow, tailored professional learning, additional permanent substitutes, a student support interventionist, and an additional associate principal and principal leadership support. Now let's take a closer look at these initiatives and their impact. I will now turn the presentation over to Dr. Dea Champ, Director of Middle School Education.
Henrico Teacher Fellows are highly effective educators who divide their time between teaching students and supporting first-year teachers, provisionally licensed teachers, annual resident educators, and board substitutes. Their classrooms serve as learning labs where new teachers can observe research-based instructional strategies. Beyond their classrooms, Teacher Fellows provide instructional support by modeling effective practices and co-teaching with novice teachers and providing feedback and strategies on instruction. They assist with classroom setup, student engagement, small group instruction, and lesson design, ensuring new teachers have the tools and support to succeed. Principals describe them as game changers, recognizing their impact on new teachers, their expertise in leading school-wide professional learning, and their ability to foster meaningful connections between new hires and veteran staff. Assigned full-time to a single school, Teacher Fellows collaborate with administrators, instructional coaches, and teaching and learning specialists to ensure instructional continuity and support. Principals also shared that Teacher Fellows serve as the glue for new teachers and board substitutes, especially mid-year hires, helping them build confidence, refine instructional skills, and navigate the day-to-day responsibilities of teaching. One of the essential elements of an Opportunity School is targeted professional learning provided by Henrico staff and when applicable, in partnership with external resources to support both educators and students. In August, Opportunity School staff welcomed Hamish Brewer, a nationally-recognized turnaround principal and former Virginia State Principal of the Year. Hamish's powerful and emotional session reinforced the importance of engaging students through respect, relationships, and the highest expectations. Additionally, his message seamlessly connected to the school quality process, emphasizing strategies to increase student achievement at each school. Aligned with this focus on student achievement, division-led professional learning is strategically designed to support each school's school support plan. Individual school plans include areas such as CHAMPs for classroom management, improvement science, instructional clarity, evidence-based interventions, and PBIS systems, ensuring professional learning directly impacts classroom practices and student outcomes. As professional learning strengthens instructional practices, the partnership between school and central office teams further supports school quality efforts through direct instructional support and targeted interventions. A key component of this work is data-driven planning, which remains a priority in Opportunity Schools. Teachers receive support in utilizing real-time data from platforms such as iReady, iExcel, and Lexia to inform instruction. Additionally, PLC teams analyze student data before planning, allowing for more intentional-tiered support, progress monitoring, and instructional adjustments that ensure responsiveness to student needs. This collaborative effort led by school teams, district teams, and Teacher Fellows ensures Opportunity Schools continue to prioritize professional learning and implement strategies that drive student success. My apologies. In addition to targeted professional learning, staffing enhancements have played a key role in strengthening Opportunity Schools. To ensure schools have the resources needed to support both students and educators, additional positions were added to enhance daily operations and instructional capacity. At the secondary level, an Associate Principal position was added with responsibilities tailored to each school's specific needs. For some schools, the position focused on operations, while in other schools, the position provided content-specific instructional support, ensuring leadership resources were used efficiently. At the elementary level, schools received a Student Support Interventionist, SSI, who works with the students demonstrating high referral rates for behavior concerns. These interventionists focus on teaching self-regulation skills, fostering positive behaviors, and providing strategies to support social-emotional growth, helping students develop the skills needed for success in the classroom. To address the ongoing impact of unfilled positions, each Opportunity School was assigned an additional permanent substitute. When not covering classes, these substitutes provide instructional support as needed. The addition of this position helps to maintain continuity and stability for both teachers and students. Opportunity School principals engage in monthly leadership meetings designed to foster collaboration and support among colleagues facing similar strengths and challenges. These meetings provide a trusted environment where principals can openly share strategies, problem-solve barriers, and connect with key district staff for support across instruction and operational needs. Through these ongoing conversations, principals have direct opportunities to request resources, discuss staffing priorities with members of the Human Resources Team, attend recruitment fairs at various colleges and universities, and work closely with the School Quality Team to navigate the school improvement processes, including state and federal monitoring requirements. Beyond discussions, principals have taken an active role in exploring strategies and best practices by visiting each other's campuses and observing instruction, student engagement, and successful programs. This collaborative approach fosters shared learning, reduces the isolation of often felt and higher need schools, and reinforces a unified commitment to continuous improvement and student successes. As we move through the final slides, we begin to highlight the Opportunity Schools Initiative. Progress can be measured in multiple ways, reflected in percentages of growth, with some gains more significant than others. At the end of year three, we will take a comprehensive look at data, including staff retention, the percentage of fully licensed staff, and student achievement. Today, we focus on the strides made over the last year and a half. One significant benefit has been the development of a cohort of dedicated school leaders who have had the space to collaborate, share expertise, and access resources that directly support student achievement. School leaders are second only to classroom teachers and their influence on student success, and we are proud of how they have embraced this responsibility with focus and commitment. While the full evaluation of Opportunity Schools will take place next year, early results already demonstrate how this initiative has equipped in school leaders with the tools, resources, and collaborative partnerships needed to build strong, high-achieving learning environments. Since the addition of Teacher Fellows, nine out of nine principals have agreed that this position is making a significant positive impact on new and provisionally licensed teachers in their schools. Furthermore, when comparing baseline data from the onset of the career ladder, Opportunity School staff participate in district professional learning at twice the rate of staff in non-Opportunity Schools, particularly in the micro-credential program. This increased engagement has also led to observed growth in specialization enrollment and national board teacher certification. Strategies learned and shared are immediately transferred to practice, positively impacting students. Building on these successes, we have also strengthened support specifically for provisionally licensed teachers through the HCPS Teacher Licensor Cohort, TLC. At the start of the 24-25 school year, there were 134 provisionally licensed teachers in Opportunity Schools, 68 of whom were invited to participate in TLC. TLC, a collaborative partnership between Henrico County Public Schools and I Teach, offers provisionally licensed teachers the opportunity to complete required professional studies, coursework asynchronously at no cost. Additionally, through TLC, Henrico staff provide targeted professional learning experiences, bridging theoretical coursework with practical classroom application. Of the 68 teachers invited, 50 elected to participate. Those not invited or who opted out either pursued a different licensure pathway or deferred their participation to the following year. Of the 50 enrolled, 45 remain active in the program, reflecting a 90% retention rate for TLC participants from Opportunity Schools. This retention suggests that up to 45 new teachers could achieve full licensure by the end of the school year. Thanks to initiatives like TLC, the introduction of Teacher Fellows, and additional targeted supports, classroom teacher vacancy rates have decreased in six of nine Opportunity Schools since launching this initiative in 2023. The addition of permanent substitutes has helped relieve classroom coverage responsibilities, benefiting colleagues by giving back the time needed for instructional planning. When comparing the 22-23 discipline infractions to school year 23-24, there is a reduction of 30 out-of-school suspensions at the elementary level, a reduction of 143 out-of-school suspensions at the middle school level, and a reduction of 135 out-of-school suspensions at the high school level. Also, all 10 schools have reported a decrease in discipline referrals. Glen Lee Elementary and Verona High School successfully transitioned from conditional to full accreditation, with Verona High School also earning the Exemplar Performance Award from the Virginia Board of Education. Of the eight Opportunity Schools that have been designated since the start of the 23-24 school year, this excludes Highland Springs Elementary School and AVR, that's a program, seven of the eight improved in at least one school quality indicator, and five out of eight schools improved in two or more indicators in their first year as Opportunity Schools. Pride runs deep among the staff and students at our Opportunity Schools. While progress is evident, our commitment continues, ensuring that all 10 schools receive the support needed to prioritize student success and sustain staff retention. Now let's hear directly from the leaders and teachers at our Opportunity Schools. They are the professionals at the heart of this Opportunity School designation.
We are an Opportunity School because we've had difficulty in staffing. So I believe we had maybe 12 board substitutes my first year.
This school year, we have 25 new staff, and so all of them are requiring support.
Hey, what's up?
We have a lot of opportunities connected to hiring highly qualified teachers. Over the last three school years, we went from having 11 board substitute teachers down to eight.
When I came here, we had quite a few vacancies, and so that, you know, the recruitment bonus, which is like $3,000, I believe, was super helpful for helping us recruit. But also with recruitment, we kind of have some extra perks, you know, having that Teacher Fellow to provide professional development, having an additional ASP to focus on the instructional side of things, and just trying to help our teachers grow. Those things have been super beneficial, and so I think that helped us to get more teachers to come to our school.
We have a lot of opportunities connected to hiring highly qualified teachers. So some may use the terminology of being hard to staff, but we see that as an opportunity.
When you do this, which one are you?
I've always had a student-teacher. I liked working with student teachers, and Teacher Fellow presented itself, and I was like, this sounds like the perfect job, like the perfect role, the perfect way to like still stay in a classroom, but also help other teachers. I sit in plan-ins with teachers, most grade levels, especially three through five. I will jump in classrooms when I'm not teaching my own classroom, and pull small groups or co-teach, or just however a teacher feels sees the need for me in the classroom.
We have between 25 and 30 teachers that are provisionally licensed or in some stage of the process to becoming fully licensed. So a lot of the folks I speak of have not gone through the traditional teacher prep programs, so they're kind of learning on the job. Still very talented individuals, certainly smart individuals, but they just might be missing some of the things that our traditional teachers pick up in college.
It used to be, you know, we'd go in and we'd interview people. We're asking all the questions, but now people have questions for us. So that's one of the things that a lot of new teachers ask, is what supports do you have for a new teacher? And so being able to say that we have a Teacher Fellow, you know, we have an instructional coach here, and we have other supports that are kind of poured in, we are able to say we have all of these extra things that are going to help you to be better and make you feel supported as a new teacher.
People know they want to teach, and like, sometimes we just don't know the proper ways to go about it, to get all the licenses or stuff like that. But like I said, the people here, like, really want to be here and work hard and show up every day for our kids.
Contextually speaking, we know that schools like Glen Lee Elementary School, while we are considered an Opportunity School, we are hard to staff. And so again, going from 11 board subs my first year here to now my third year to eight, we're getting closer to zero. We're getting closer to have fully licensed teachers here at Glen Lee Elementary School, and because of that, we were able to achieve full accreditation.
Since I've gotten here and since we've become an Opportunity School, we have become accredited.
So I think this has helped encourage people to kind of step out into the unknown, and the folks are pleasantly surprised once they get here.
And so our goal is to continue that push, to remain on track, and we are grateful for all the support from the Opportunity Schools.
Okay. As we conclude this afternoon's presentation, we sincerely thank you, the school board, for your continued commitment to all Henrico schools and for supporting the intentional investment in our Opportunity Schools. The 25-26 budget reflects ongoing support, including the addition of Radcliffe Elementary and Brooklyn Middle School as Opportunity Schools for next year, reinforcing the need for continued investment through the operating budget to sustain this work. Your advocacy and leadership make the Opportunity Schools initiative possible by understanding that each of our 74 schools and program has unique strengths and challenges. You ensure that resources are strategically directed to meet their individual needs. This intentional approach provides the targeted support and funding necessary to move all schools toward full accreditation with thriving students and staff. Again, thank you, and at this time, Dr. Champ, but now we'll answer your questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Champ and Dr. Grant. I will start with Mr. Young.
Of course. Thank you for the presentation. I don't know where to start. It was a lot of information, but I think we have proven that investment works. And when we commit resources to students and schools that needed the most, we see real academic and social growth. For those of us that weren't here in 2023 when this was created, can you walk us through how schools are chosen to become Opportunity Schools, or some of the challenges that some of the schools may have had previously?
It was basically determined by the vacancy rate of those schools. So we took the top-tier schools that had the highest vacancy rate, and we selected those schools.
Yeah, it was a metric related to vacancy turnover and the number of provisionally licensed teachers.
Okay. Thank you. Although I'm always wanting more money for our teachers, I think everybody knows that. But what you've proven is that it isn't just about the money. This is targeted, it's data-driven, it's results-oriented, we have Teacher Fellows, we have ASPs. What I just seen in this presentation is amazing for what we're doing individually, meeting schools where they're at, and board colleagues. I still would encourage us to look into spending a little bit more money, even if it's incentive-based, having a base of $3,300 and maybe some incentives to kind of raise that stipend that we give our teachers and our leaders in those schools. But I'm excited about this. I mean, you laid out everything. I don't have to repeat everything. We had two schools become accredited, Glen Lee and Verona. They came and they spoke with us, and they all love the Teacher Fellow. Maybe we need another one in each one of these schools, right? So maybe if I don't get my wish for increasing the stipends, maybe we can look into maybe still improving on the steps that we've already done. But this is amazing. I love the concept. I'm in commercial real estate. We have what's called Opportunity Zones, and it's similar to what the Opportunity Schools is, is driving development. Same thing we're doing here is driving results. So thank you for the presentation. I probably will have a redirect after my colleagues go, but I definitely appreciate the conversation.
I would note that the amount of that incentive does increase as we give employee across the board increases, so it's actually $3,500 for the next school year. So I would mention that.
Thank you, and I actually want to redirect myself. Can I ask another question? The two new schools, Brooklyn and Radcliffe, of course, I'm excited about it, but is that just one year for them, and then we're...
No, it's a three-year designation at the point at which you enter.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
It's all good. It's all good. Well, I'll start by saying I found your presentation very thoughtful. From the colors that were chosen to the individuals in the presentation, I found it very aesthetically pleasing, and the content was a beautiful blend. So the way in which it was presented, I wanted to give you and your team kudos for that. And the ability to absorb so much with so few slides is a skill. So thank you so much for the effort in which the way you presented your material today. I also heard you say pride... I also heard you say that pride runs deep, but I also want to say to you as well, so does the pursuit of excellence for each of those leaders in that slide, and so I appreciate it. I do have a few thoughts. I don't know if this one is more directed to Dr. Cashwell, so just wanted to kind of warn you. However, I know Senator Ayer has been seeking $1 million in the state budget to expand our Opportunity Schools. I think it would be wise to share for the general public a status update on that.
Yeah, I don't believe it... While we were grateful for the support of this idea, I believe it did not pass. Is that correct? Yeah, it did not pass, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, the work and fight continues. The fight continues, but I was receiving questions about that dollar amount, and I thought it would make sense just to share with the public where we stand with that. So regarding strengthening outcomes on that particular slide, are these the primary success indicators that are going to guide our analysis moving forward? They will be. Would it be possible, or actually, let me rephrase that, I would like for us to consider academic as one of those indicators, maybe, you know, for number seven or however, but just for consideration, is an academic indicator one of these as well?
It is, and it was simply not presented in this presentation, given we weren't working off a full three-year set of data. So while we did nod to some of the academic achievements, you're absolutely right. One of the monitoring factors and the data meetings that are held regularly at our Opportunity Schools are around academic achievement. That's an important point.
And so that was the only area that I found myself having many questions on, and I would suggest, even if it's not readily available, it's okay to just put the indicator on the slide to give a nod that it's being paid attention to. So something for consideration. And then also, something that I was thinking about for your consideration as well is currently schools maintain the status for three years, which you've shared, regardless of staff changes. But has there been any consideration to extend this to four years? And I'm going to speak specifically to academics. So I know you're monitoring this, but it takes, at least in my opinion, a good two to three years before you can have solid results, which means that pushes you to the fourth year to share them. And so I wonder if any conversation has been had on the impacts of extending it from three years to four years, impact financially, academically, and with the other indicators that are presented on the slide.
Absolutely. So we knew that three years would be the minimum. It doesn't mean that it couldn't be extended, but we did want to commit to analyzing the investment in staff. I mean, it is a significant monetary investment, and we wanted to make sure that we were seeing alignment to success related to the investments, and then would certainly be able to hear direct testimonies, as we have at this touch point, from our Opportunity School staff. So looking at the length of the structure, the structure itself, is it the right structure, the right number of supports, the right monetary incentive? So all of those things would be analyzed, and it may be at the juncture at which we look at that, at the three-year period for that, particularly that large initial batch of schools. It may be that there's a recommendation for continuation for a longer period of time or any other alterations to the structure itself that would best serve schools.
So here are my thoughts with that. And so part of me knew a little bit of that, of course, but the other part is, if you were to wait, you would be almost already in your fourth year. My recommendation would be to present the information that you have now to allow for the board and the general public to understand this analysis as well, so that we can all move forward on the journey before you get to that end of the three-year mark. Not all of it needs to be shared, but I do believe if you were to wait until the end of that three-year period, it kind of prohibits some other decision-making. And so when you're thinking about the financial analysis and the investment that have been put into this, understanding where we are today will help in giving guidance and decision-making and letting the public understand why this is such a win. Does that make sense?
It does. I agree, and that's part of the reason we're here today, sharing this presentation, and really wanting to underscore that as we've begun to look at early successes, we felt confident enough to continue to build this initiative into the budget and are grateful for the continued investment. But it's a conversation we should keep at the forefront rather than simply waiting till the end of the three years, so we'll continue to do that.
Outstanding. And then lastly, some of the things that has been shared with me was around the usage of the extra resources. And so it's always wonderful to have the extra help, but sometimes it can cause a little bit of confusion in understanding what are my specific roles in this specific space? Have you heard any feedback similar to that?
We work, excuse me, we work with our principals and small group on asset mapping, looking at all the resources, human resources, in your building, and how to strategically place those resources to meet the needs of the school. So we do work on, we have a lot of resources, and we try to work with our principals to use those resources effectively and in the right places within the school.
Thank you for that, because what I hear is more so it's the placement and then making sure it aligns with the role and responsibility that's expected to be delivered. So I'm very pleased to hear about the asset mapping that's taking place with the leadership team and also with growth and opportunities to learn. So thank you so much. That's all I have, Chair Shay.
Thanks, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Kinsella?
I certainly do appreciate this presentation. For me, in a kind of follow-up to what Ms. Atkins just said about the asset mapping, I know in the beginning, even feedback that I was hearing was that it was so many resources, and I know that the team got involved in trying to coordinate, I guess, maybe a simple term, instead of asset mapping, maybe coordination, right? Feedback in the building, each different building, what, you know, what do you need? And the coordination of all the resources is truly an ongoing effort, if I'm not misunderstanding.
Flexible. It's fluid.
I think outside of the testimonial videos, which... I think outside of the testimonial videos, which really helped me as a member, this Slide nine lets me know right now, even though we're not to year three, right, and we don't have a starting point, and look at where, you know, look at how far we've come, Slide nine is transformational. And I look forward to the continued tools, incentives, resources, supports, and collaboration, so that Slide nine just continues to look better on the outcomes in these schools. And I'm excited about adding two more in this next budget. Chair Shea.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella, Mr. Irving.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, I truly appreciate it. I think I have the distinct pleasure on this board of having taught at one of the opportunity schools prior, so that kind of guides my lens and just being a teacher myself. And I do have some questions and then some maybe things that I think could be more beneficial moving forward in terms of not just increasing stipends but also extra support. So what is the average, or if you can even provide median vacancy rate reduction across the six schools that experience them? Would we happen to have those numbers?
We can get it for you, I don't think we have that on hand.
Thank you, I would appreciate that. I'm looking at the strengths outcomes in the reduced disciplinary referrals on here, and it says that all 10 schools reported a decrease in disciplinary referrals. So I think on the face of that, that sounds excellent, but as a teacher, I think, well, what is the cause of that? Is it an early intervention and support? Is it an implicit emphasis on writing fewer referrals? Is it a systemic compositional effect of moving out of COVID and the overall reduction that we've seen in behavioral instances since the early exit of the pandemic to now? What do we think is driving the reduction?
Well, they definitely are receiving more support with the teacher fellows in regards to how to run the classroom, how they set up the classroom and instruction, but then also we have PL, less that focus on classroom management such as CHAMPs. So there's some more intentional focus on the PL that each school can receive.
Okay, I appreciate that. In terms of things that I think moving forward, if we're to see, you know, success, and I guess my question would also be, what is our break-even point from a dollar spend standpoint to improved metrics on what we would see as this is enough success to validate that this was a worthwhile decision to make? Like, how are we, from a metric standpoint, saying this is a large enough effect size based on the dollar spent to warrant it moving forward?
I don't think there's one factor identified, I think it's a compilation of those, you know, understanding both the metrics involved here, but the teacher, the staff experience, right? That the feeling of being supported, what we know about the research when it comes to teacher turnover, particularly in those first five years for a new teacher, and the reasons teachers are leaving. You know, we don't only want to retain them, we want their satisfaction rates to be high, to continue to pursue the field, to remain in the field. So I think it's a number of those factors combined, rather than, you know, one factor being the tipping point. Of course, we'd love to see improvement in all of those areas, but I think it's really the totality of those and the positive impacts they have, not just on student outcomes, but on staff retention, staff preparedness, and ultimately their satisfaction.
Yeah, and I didn't mean for it to come off as if there's one defining number that we'll look at at the end of the day, and that'll be the decider, but I would like us to receive, you know, what are the metrics upon which this will be evaluated, and what do we view as a significant enough increase to warrant the, I mean, because it is a big financial investment, and I'm absolutely, think it's worthwhile if it has the intended effect that it's supposed to, but I just want to make sure that that's, that we know how it's going to be assessed moving forward. My suggestions would be, I think, just being in a building, adding more permanent subs, and I think, maybe even just calling them floaters, I know that in my building, it's nice when you have somebody who you can move around as you need, and I think having more of those individuals who are, you know, full-time pay and benefits is wonderful, some people like that role of the changing, every day's different, and I think from an administrative standpoint, it's certainly nice to be able to have multiple people who you can move around. I think adding more student support interventionists could also be worthwhile in lieu of just more financial compensation for the people who are in the buildings. And something that I would also like us to take a look at is a concept called a coach-on-demand program, which is a duty. And my building, essentially, if you're assigned it, you're typically a teacher who has great relationships with students, and your duty period is essentially to be on call, so that if you get called to a classroom for a student incident, you can step in the first time and watch the classroom, so that the teacher can step outside with the student and have a conversation with them. Sometimes it's, both people need a break, and you can walk the student around the building and let them catch cool air, and it's just a new person who has entered the situation, and from a kid's standpoint, it's like, well, why would I be mad at this person who just got here? So I think that can help diffuse situations that sometimes become tough, and I would love us to look at, you know, a trial and an expansion of such a new program, because I do think it could have, you know, a good impact on teacher and student relationships. But otherwise, I appreciate all of this.
Okay, if I can add, some of our schools do have more than one permanent substitute, and we have provided additional funds for interventionist tutors within those schools.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. I love how you explained this as an intentional investment at the end of the presentation. I think that's really what is different from this than just investing more money, it's investing it intentionally in ways that, like you said, are both data-driven and school, based on school leader feedback as to what schools really need. And I think that's why we're seeing this be a game changer, and you know, and as it was described, and I've heard over and over again, these teacher fellows are really a pivotal part of this being a game changer. Back in the fall, I put our Glen Lee and Verona administrators who had come when we did the accreditation part, kind of on the spot a little bit, but they graciously accepted it and did, and they also mentioned specifically that the teacher fellows were a game changer in the piece of going from conditional to full accreditation, and really the heart, a big part of the heart of this program. And so I'm excited about that, I'm excited as we reach the three-year mark to get the, not only the data, but the input on kind of evaluating this program and, you know, what positions may be able to roll out to schools beyond opportunity schools, why we may provide all the supports, what are the key supports we may be able to offer to schools that are not opportunity schools, as well as what supports we may double down on in opportunity schools and that sort of thing. And I said, so I think, unlike Dr. Cashwell has said, that this three-year initial commitment to really dive deep in the program is so important. Piggybacking on what Mr. Young asked, just to be very clear, so our initial cohort that came on in 2023, in 2020, around 2026, around 2026, they will be evaluated to see if the opportunity school is still unnecessary and in good fit for their school, is that correct? And then Highland Springs would be evaluated in '27, and then Ratcliffe and Brooklyn would be evaluated in '28.
That's correct, and I think it's fair to say if after the three-year period for the initial set of schools, we were to modify the opportunity schools program, then that would also apply to the schools still within that earlier period.
Great, and I also appreciate you clarifying that the raise applies to the stipends, so we're now up to 35, Mr. Young, we're, you know, we're getting there. One point of clarity and one question, so one of the slides mentioned a signing bonus for some teachers, is that the same thing as the stipend that's being received? Okay. I just wanted to have clarity there. And then when we look at these teacher fellows, from being a secondary teacher, I can kind of imagine what that looks for their schedule to have a reduced teaching load, and then the sections that they're not teaching, they can use as their teacher mentor blocks, I would have kind of assumed that's how it works. Can you help me understand what that would look like at an elementary school level when they don't necessarily have, you know, class blocks in the same way? So I guess my question is, what does, thank you, Dr. Weston, what does a teacher fellow in the elementary school typically, I know all of them aren't going to be the same, but typically what would their schedule look like?
He's responsible for it, so we're going to let...
Yes, Dr. Weston, welcome to the podium.
So it is a great question. So at the elementary level, if a school is departmentalized, the teacher fellow may be a specific subject, which like Laverneum, that is the case. So our teacher fellow works with fifth grade primarily science, so she would work with all teachers in fifth grade, science planning, and that's about 25% of her time. So 25% would be professional learning, 40% would be with our new teachers, our board subs, our resident, our annual resident educators, and new teachers. And then 10% of that time is really working district-wide. For schools that aren't departmentalized, they are working with a specific grade level. So it may be pull-out, it may be co-teaching, maybe second grade, maybe third grade.
Based upon the need of the school.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate that. I think, I think that is all from me. Really excited, really excited to see some of these strengthening outcomes, and as we look to see more specific data coming in as we get close to that third-year mark, really, really excited about this. I was able to, at V SBA, kind of nudge some division leaders and superintendents from other, I was like, HEMRICO's got a great thing going on with these opportunity schools, you should ask Dr. Cashwell, and so that was fun. Any redirects?
Yes.
Let's go.
I hate to beat a dead horse, but will we get this presentation the same time next year? Because that would be the end of the three years, correct? My only concern is, with Ms. Atkins said...
It would likely be earlier, yes. We timed it with the budget this year because of the addition, but we'll certainly begin our data analysis and work prior to now and would have some updates for the board.
Okay, because it is a budget item.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, okay.
So it'd be well in advance of the budget planning.
Okay, and I think that's what you were getting at.
Exactly, yeah, you know, so because it is a large investment, it's so important to get the raw data earlier. Like I said, I fell in love with the presentation, so the presentation is also necessary, but I think as key decision-makers, getting that raw data around the academic performance is a must, and that ties right into investment. And oftentimes, that's how you determine whether, to Mr. Irving's point, how are we determining, how are we measuring the return on investment? And we would need the academic performance data and some of the vacancy data, so forth and so on, sooner in my opinion than that end of third year, for many, many, many reasons. But that wasn't why I wanted to redirect, I just was kind of vibing off of Mr. Young's thoughts. I wanted to know if you could provide the academic performance data information at some point within the next few weeks for these particular opportunity schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else, colleagues? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.